What's five thirty and time to call to order our special meeting of the Aberdeen City Council.
Member Remley.
Here.
Mitchell.
Here.
Campbell. Clay Hanson. Agnew. Bunsen. Johnson. Ruck.
Here.
Mayor Leeison.
Here.
Start with the pledge of allegiance.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, founded on the principle of liberty and justice for all.
We have just one item on the agenda and you all presumably know why you're here. Before we start, I want to mention to the council, I sent out to the council yesterday an email basically just linking out loud what the income and expense factors are for the federal building here. I didn't send that out as a proposal or even necessarily as my idea what we should do. It was just to say, just to keep it out loud with that information I had. So that's not the subject of tonight's meeting, it was just information sent out to you. Instead, the subject of tonight's special meeting is the resolution that you have in front of you that was prepared by our city attorney. And so I'll turn it over to him and Adam, if you would maybe to start, just say what you expect, what do you want the product of this meeting to be? And what should it not be?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. The purpose of this meeting is, in the purest sense, to either vote to approve or not to approve the resolution of necessity for the acquisition of real property. Real property being the old building and the current federal courthouse at 102 Fourth Avenue southeast. The more broad definition of what we're looking for tonight is whether the city has an interest in preserving, in acquiring this structure to help preserve the future of the district court, the federal district court for the northern district of South Dakota. The current owner of the structure has let it fall into some disrepair. There are a couple of issues that are unknown. I haven't been updating them yet. There may be some issues still. The building is still in current use by the district court. The GSA, which is the United States government's real estate agency, for lack of a better way to phrase them, has leased until the end of May, after which they will no longer be leasing this property, it doesn't meet their requirement. In order to preserve the federal courthouse and the federal court in the city of Aberdeen, the matter has been brought for consideration of whether the city should acquire that property. Presumably then immediately do as much repair as we can for a short amount of time to help meet the GSA's requirements and therefore encourage the GSA and the federal court system to their administrative office to keep the current courthouse in its current place. But we don't have any guarantee of the construction that will do it for the administrative office of the courts to do that. But there's a guarantee that if nothing happens, that they won't. The GSA has made very clear that absent some unique action, that the building will no longer be occupied as of May 31st. And so, as you discussed this, really you just need to consider all the things attendant to the resolution of necessity. What should the city do to, if anything, to preserve the district court in the northern district of South Dakota? And is acquisition of this property through the process of eminent domain something that is of public good and is in the best interest of the community?
So procedurally then, for the purposes of discussion, do we have a motion related to the resolution you have attorney?
Yes, sir.
Motion, Mitchell, and second by Agnew, and I will open it to the...
I should point out that because this is a unique situation, the process of eminent domain is not necessarily ordinary business. This resolution does have to pass by a two-thirds vote, and that's two-thirds vote of the members of the council, not just those present, although everybody is present.
And, Clive, did you have the intention that there would be some opening remarks? Or should we just start with discussion from the council? Did you have, Judge, did you have anything you want to say before the council starts discussing this?
Go ahead. Answer some questions as well.
Maybe if you could just tell us anything you think we need to know that we didn't hear from you the last time? And then that'll give us a new starting point and then we'll turn it over to council.
All right. Well, again, the resolution is very well done and everything in there is accurate. My payroll is about a million one, I think. Probably a big payroll in Aberdeen. I'd say it all over the paper if that's what it is. And frankly, the only, one of the primary reasons that I still act it, fairly act it, is because I want to keep the federal court in Aberdeen. I started to retire five years ago, I guess, and I get paid the same regardless of whether I work or not, so nothing to me financially. But it's an important thing for Aberdeen and I've lived here a long time, it's a great place to live. I want to help the bar here as well, it's very important for the bar and their clients to be able to go to federal court without having to peer or rat the city with support. I think there's no question that GSA would lease the building once the fire code deficiencies had been met. Fire marshal will be that the cost would be something between ten and seventy thousand dollars, but pretty broad figure. I think that's what you'd be looking at. GSA has written a letter and they said the elevators are not, or the elevator, they think we have two elevators in this. It has not been inspected for service, though it's been serviced and it's operated fine, sometimes it doesn't, but that's the difference. And the emergency call box, I'm going to say boxes again, they don't even know how many, however we handle the building, does not function. So I suppose that would actually fix. As you know, the present rentals there are about a hundred and ninety-one thousand and... That's for, fortunately, we pay rent thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-two dollars a month plus a percentage of the real property tax. I'm not sure exactly what that is, but I think fifty-eight percent of the real estate taxes also are being paid by the federal government. Then the U.S. Attorney Office has leased space and part security has been leased space. The clerk, the clerk of pure seethalls. That would be included in our payments. So anyway, the total annual rent right now, just the people in the building, is about a hundred and ninety-one thousand dollars. And that also includes the U.S. Attorney Office, that's separate. With their annual rents, twenty-some thousand. And the resolution points out, in 2012, the federal government paid quarter point of counsel for the federal court in Aberdeen, four hundred and twenty-three thousand seven hundred and forty-two dollars. Well, that's a rather significant amount of money coming from the Aberdeen family.
Jeff, did you have, just talking about the rent, are you paying utilities along with that as part of the rent or separately?
No, the landlord pays the, pays the water and electricity and store to a hole.
The heat costs, things like that?
Heat, yes, I do not know what those numbers are and the forest rocks who runs the building here doesn't know either. And I don't know if we can find out, maybe we can from Northwestern on that amount. The case load has been increasing here. In 2010, we had forty-seven criminal cases filed in the northern division. Let's go by the number of criminal defendants filed. In 2010, we had felony charges filed against fifty individuals. In 2011, we had sixty-two felony prosecutions. And in 2012, we had ninety-seven. So that's a significant increase and they are prosecuting more and more people. Largely, it is all of this bribe against all this violence for women and children on the reservation, it's a bank of disgrace. What's going on there with all these women and children we've picked alive, we have been able to stem it so far. So I think realistically, yes, if I'm correct.
Judge, can you help me answer one of my constituents' questions that they, what if the feds decide to move, we do approve this? Who decides that and how do they decide? Is that a possibility?
It's a possibility, but highly unlikely. How the system works, the administrative office of the U.S. Courts from Washington, and I've been talking to that person almost daily. They tell the General Services Administration what the court wants in Aberdeen. And they give them the spare footage and the investigations. And then GSA goes out and finds that space. I saw something that the slander got from somebody from GSA and then telling what space they wanted and they want it, they do want it. But realistically, I think, I would, I'm going to try to get a ten-year lease. That's what, that's what they entered into for the lease space for the BIA in the Wells Harbor building.
Judge, we got a note today on that, that the BIA actually leased space in Mr. Aman's other office building and not the Wells Harbor building.
Oh, is that what it is? Okay, I don't know where that is. GSA is going to lease space for the courts so that we have offices to go through, no court for the courts. And apparently we will wind up moving all the furniture and the files.
Yes.
This is a tremendous move of cabinets and books and furniture. Yes, sir.
If we were to partner or acquire this property, I know security happens on the first floor and there is one elevator. If their work should be attended on the second floor, security doesn't always work in that. I mean, is there a way of having security on your floor or does it have to be on the main floor?
It has to be on the main floor, because we don't want people coming into the first floor and planning a bomb or something. So that's, that's the drawback of trying to lease it to private businesses. You know, you don't, maybe you want your plants or whatever going through all that security, but it's not that way. I'll be like Greg Weber or something. After a while, the court's security people, of course, whose comments is, they know who's coming and going in the building.
Judge, our resolution here is, you know what it's for. As a legal expert here in the room, surrounded by them behind, if we pass this, what will happen? What do you think will happen? How will, how will this be viewed from, from the status of a federal court judge? What are we doing here and what's the effect going to be if we pass this?
Well, if we affect it to keep the federal court operating in Aberdeen, this is the only alternative. We've tried everything, of course, there's just no other space in Brown County that works for this category. The county courthouse is going to use all, will follow the pack, although Judge Van Wall has told me that I can go over there and hold curios on Mondays. Not all, but on both Mondays. So we will do that. If we have a curious battle, probably have to move it here, of course, until we can get going.
But you think this would have, this would have significant legal weight with the people who would have to make decisions to keep the court here, like the GSA and...
Yes, definitely. That's what they're waiting for. And the other judges in South Dakota, I guess I talked to them regularly, Judge Prusell, he's on senior status like I am. And the chief judge, Judge Biden from that city, Judge Schreier, the Falls, and Judge Lang, the Seapalls, here, possibly here. So keep walking all the time and you can pick the days and things when I... They all agree with me, yes, I will. About Congress, does it say that over there?
Determine the value of the building. Mr. Kim, is there anyone who's entitled to fair market value for their property? You can't take it without compensation. And of course, there could be disputes on how much.
Would that trial be held in federal court?
Be held in the circuit court.
State court.
We considered the idea of trying-
You'd certainly get a fair trial in federal court.
We did consider trying in federal court. I just don't see how you could get there.
No.
So then, at the conclusion of that trial, then a price is established. And then the counsel would have the decision whether or not they wanted to go through and do that. Or if we've gone that far, are we committed?
You're not committed until you write the check with a couple of caveats. First off, I mean, this isn't an action that I'm--that is being asked of this counsel for you to take back later. I mean, we don't tend to treat people that way. We shouldn't treat anybody that way. You shouldn't vote for this unless you're, based on what you know now, willing to go through with it. You're not committed until you write the check. However, you would be obligated for attorney's fees in the event that you withdrew it prior to the possession of property. You would be responsible for the owner's attorney's fees. I don't anticipate there being additional attorney's fees from on the city side. Not that I'm going to be handling it. Hopefully, I should be able to handle it entirely in-house. If not, there's plenty of volunteers in the legal community who have offered to help already.
Would it be reasonable, though, for us to have--to retain some ambivalence on this because we don't know what the price would be?
Yes. And I think that the passage of this resolution of necessity is by itself not any kind of a permanent obligation. It sets the wheels in motion. If, for example, the appraisal came back and this building appraised at, just to make up a number, $10 million, and you thought that that wasn't an appropriate expenditure of public funds, then you could re-vote, pull back, and call the whole thing off. Again, subject to the caveat that you may be liable for Mr. Kim's attorney's fees.
So the bigger step than this as far as a, let's say, a moral commitment on good intentions in this counsel would be whether we go through with the trial once we have the appraisal?
Yes. I think that, strictly speaking, there isn't any downside to the passage of this resolution. It allows the process to go forward, additional discoveries to be made, additional information to come to the counsel's attention. At some point, there becomes a downside, and that is the liability of the city for the attorney's fees. And again, I really don't want to encourage this counsel to pass this unless you're willing, based on what you know now, you have to. It's not the right thing for you to do.
I have two questions. One, first of all, I want to clarify on the record that I have the answer to this, but my understanding is that the court does not have an interest in building out a courthouse in this community. If you leave the building in there, the court will not be able to do a building.
That's correct.
So there's no opportunity for us to say, "You start spending money on a building, you'll spend money to build that office somewhere else."
Oh, that would-
Build that court somewhere else.
Oh, you saw this, didn't you? Because a federal court has to be built through so many standards. Yes.
We don't have any other building except the post office. That's probably what it is.
But, I mean, there's other options for the council. I mean, it gets between them. I want to make sure that everybody's understanding that-
You're correct.
If you leave that building, there won't be one.
That's exactly right. If the city does not acquire this property, there will be no federal court.
And then my second question is, um, one of the ones that we have to pay.
Yes.
And then you threw out some other numbers. The other day I heard over a month like five, maybe a question, is two million here right now? And I don't know how to figure those numbers. I mean, you turned over a couple of times, so it could be six million, seven million in time.
Yeah. That wasn't my number. I have no idea what it is. People coming in here with jury duty, or their witnesses, or lawyers, or the town, or the court reporter, or the U.S. attorney, they all stay in hotels, obviously, and they eat the rest of it. So I suppose we're shocked here.
Be careful. They might be coming for promotion funds later on.
Funny you should say that. I was going to suggest that.
Okay. So, but I mean, that's something that I'm going to add here. Who's going to go to the-
Yes.
Yeah. First of all, I want to commend you, Judge Kornman, for standing up for Aberdeen in this.
Thank you, sir.
You don't need to.
I don't need to.
I mean, you could have retired several years ago.
Yes.
And what is the guarantee that if you retire, if you decide to retire, are they going to put him on a federal judge here?
No.
So when you're done, you're done. It's over.
That's right. Unless one of the--the house court is entitled to three active full-time federal judges.
Okay.
And we have the three now, and they're not very old. So, uh-
And if you retire, the judge won't permit you to have it.
So, therefore, they would be able to serve Aberdeen, take care of the cases here by coming from New York or Sioux Falls. But we don't know the answer to that yet. You know, I'm the second resident federal judge in the history of Aberdeen. Well, I took off, and I was the 13th federal judge in the history of the South Door. So, there aren't very many.
If we don't know the answer to that, what does that say about their willingness to commit to a 10-year lease?
A 10-year lease is going to be difficult, I think. I think we could absolutely be able to get a 5-year lease with opportunity to do.
Well, I think you're going to have to ask me where I think it's going to be. We've had that part in Aberdeen. It's hard, like, to remember for Aberdeen for a year.
Oh, yes.
So, technically, one of their, in the 60s, we had a federal court in the 60s.
Yes.
So I don't foresee it after what I was planning to do, that it's going to go away. I think there's still a need, that's why they still want to leave. Or even if you retire, they still want a place that's already set up. You know, which is what we used to do for you here, like you said.
Right.
In the history of South Dakotas, we've only had two federal sitting judges in Aberdeen in the last 400 years.
That's right.
You know, so to me, that's not as much of a worry. The biggest worry is, I think you would answer that, is what the case is. Because, don't be honest, it's a type of day and age, we have to look at what our true wants are, what our true needs are. There is a definite need for the federal courthouse in Aberdeen, whether you're here or not. And that's irrelevant. Thank God you're here. I think it helps this discussion and getting it started. But I don't think the GSA, I think they'd like to see it here. I think the federal district court wants to see it here. So, I think if you're going to start worrying about who's retiring, I think that should be its concern.
Yeah. It is a concern.
It's a very--so when you do this process of figuring this out, I'm not, like, too worried about it.
Todd, that leads into what Adam mentioned to me that he wanted to add to the discussion here, sir.
This, the resolution of necessity posits sort of two separate elements of the district court's position in the community. Obviously, there's a financial impact. And that, if you said frankly of any employer, well, it's worth considering it in very important consideration. It's not the only thing to consider. Part of the consideration, at least as addressed in the resolution of necessity, is the service that the district court provides. Frankly, I'm not entirely sure, were this a private employer, that strictly considering the payroll would be sufficient to pass muster in the case courses. The truth of the matter is that the district court, like all governmental entities, including this body, is here to provide a service. And the services they provide allow delegates to take, to have their case heard here and not have to travel for every case, every hearing. They hear bankruptcy cases, and as long as there's a federal courthouse here, you can have bankruptcy hearings here, which means that people who need the protection of bankruptcy because they don't have sufficient funds to manage their bills won't have to ensure more expenditures by traveling to here as usual. It's easier for victims of crime to come here instead of to hear what's involved. There are tax cases that take place, and that can take place in this community, as opposed, again, to having to go to another community. Those services won't disappear, but they will become infinitely more inconvenient to apply. And it's not just the money that's involved here. It's the services in the community and the provision of legal services.
I quite agree that I will work as long as I am physically, definitely. I'm looking at the damage, I'm not that evil, I'm not sure. I'm fighting my wife.
You know, if, again, obviously, the preferred resolution is to negotiate a purchase that's satisfactory to everybody. And so, let's say that Mr. Kim and I talk tomorrow, and he said, "Okay, here's a number." And I said, "Okay, that's fair. I'll take it to the counsel. We could do it on Monday." But if that doesn't happen, he's got 30 days from the filing of the action to challenge the necessity with public use of it. Assuming that that doesn't happen and that 30 days lapses, then it's as quickly as a jury trial can be impaneled and the sides can be ready. Now, would, do I think that the state court would expedite this? I do. I think they would be willing to counter it if new judges available. Do I think that the state court, the circuit court, would be fair in allowing both sides time to acquire appraisals and to get their experts in place and to have a good appraisal to defend it, a good defensible appraisal? Yes. Really, it may, just like buying a house, kind of come down to defend, how long it's going to take to get the appraised?
Can I, uh, no one else is talking, are they?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Clint.
Um, you know, and of course, for me, you know, I mean, you sit there and talk about you have 30 days to comment. Can you speak of the process that would go through? Because 30 days is already the middle of June, and their lease is up.
I can inform this counsel that the GSA has made no commitment to lease this space. If I were able to tell them that the city owned it on Tuesday, they have not committed to me that they would or even are interested in, formally interested in leasing space. So that is another thing. Do I think they are? I think they are, to the same extent the judge thinks they are. I think that the existence of a federal courthouse in this community is important to the administrative office of the courts. And I think that that facility is, with some updates, desirable to the GSA for a variety of reasons. It meets their criteria well. But you should know, going forward, there is no commitment to do so.
Given, follow up on your question, Clint. Does this landlord have the option of locking the door, even if we pass this?
Oh, sure, because it, you know, until you take title to the building.
So what would happen in the first instance?
You'd go lock the door. We are going, I think, we're going to have to move, as I said, all of our personal property out of that building terribly expensive. But you can't walk away from the building and leave our personal property. I think there's a state statute on that, that if you put the tenant, manager, personal property, you have to leave it out after a certain period of time. I have a statute on that, but... So we're going to have to move all of our personal property. We can't move the bench, obviously, and the jury box and all those things. All the law books. There's a lot of stuff there. Talking about the magistrate, U.S. probation, my two lawyers, and the magistrate judge, martial service, U.S. attorney.
First of all, if we go through with this, and we start this process, is there any, just like anything else, is there any legal action that we can put along with this to allow you to stay in that building by law? Like, by either state law, federal law, localized? That's one of my questions. And then the other question, it comes back to the value of what this building is worth. The unique thing about this, before we go to the law, we basically know we got into it. The good thing is, we're going to know is, we've also seen a lot of things throughout that building. So the value of that building, in my own mind, is probably less than what you paid for it because of numerous things. You know, the, you rid of things after what you should have done for this building, and plus the loss of a tax. It's, you know, I don't think we're going to be very surprised if this building is figured out in my own mind, and definitely we don't have, you know, the true expenses. But I look at, okay, we have $191,000 of income coming in. Let's say it's worth a million dollars. Making a loan payment, and of course, we have no expenses in that. Let's say we got $100,000 of expenses in there. That leaves us $91,000 a year to make a human one million dollar loan. And I don't know what it would be, but I just don't perceive this being much different than what the value of the property would be actually being.
That's a good point.
Can you answer his first question on, I guess he's asking if you can get an injunction to keep it open?
See, that would make a lot of fun, you know, I'm a lawyer.
I think I could stay in the building if I decided I'd stay. Who's going to live?
That's what I mean.
State court has no jurisdiction over it, as far as that.
The worst thing I do.
But I can't be in the building if there's no electricity, and no water, and no garbage service. He's already not paying the garbage service, and that's stacking up to half a story high. So I would, my inclination was just to say, "Try to get me out. We'll just stay in the building." I could do it for a long time, but it's just not practical without all these services and, you know, the cleaning.
We're assuming that the funds to purchase this would be through loan, through borrowed money? Clint?
Yeah, we don't have available cash to purchase this building. It would have to be a loan.
A million dollars, 4% for 10 years, is $120,000. So it's close.
So, in your email today, you said that there'd be like $25,000 extra in outside the cash flow?
I was just speculating that there could be, in my mind, even at a million dollar purchase price, no more of a shortfall than $50,000 and probably significantly less.
Well, you brought it up, Dave. We have the budgets coming up here this summer as far as promotional budgets.
Thought the same thing. You know, but what better place to spend that promotion fund money if it's needed?
Really, I mean, there's, some other people can do without. This is very important, in my mind, to keep this thing going. I think we could probably find the money, the extra money, outside of the cash flow that it's already producing.
Does anybody have any thoughts, before we get too far away from it, of Adam's point that he's making, that in a sense of fair play, that we shouldn't go farther than this unless we're really committed in our minds to, probably, unless something very unusual comes up, stop this? Any thoughts on that, on the other?
I would say that I'm, if, you know, I support this, and I'm leaning that way, that I would want to go all the way. But, I mean, there's still some questions in my mind here that I want to answer. One of them is ownership. I don't think the city should be the owner of this building. If we take the lead, that's fine, but I think we need an exit strategy now of this. Timing of this. Now we're talking about that you're going to have to move on. Is there some reason that we need to do, what is the reason we need to do this at this time?
Oh, it needs to be done an hour and a half.
Okay. I mean, we don't have another day. We don't have another week.
Oh, I would have seen that, but-
Okay.
But, you know-
I mean, to, what I'm-
I have some questions.
Right.
Because I need to convince the other judges, and the administrative office of the U.S. Courts and GSA, that we are going forward in Aberdeen to protect the court. Otherwise, they're going to go. They have offered to lease offices for myself and my staff without a court, a courtroom in law, Chris, that makes no sense.
I think, for me, it's who's going to own this building in the long term.
Yeah, in the long term, might be something else again. I don't think you'd have any problem with disposing of the building if you buy it for fair market value. Maybe I'm wrong. I think there'd be a lot of private interest in this, and maybe other public interest.
Well, I think the public interest, I mean, I've visited some of our, some of the people that come and get promotion money from us. We could, because they pay rent, so if we could house them when they're up, but I'm not sure that going through a security system on first floor to get the CVV on the second floor is all that welcoming, whatever it is.
That's correct.
So, ownership's an important piece for me. Because is there any talk of someone partnering with us?
Well, there have been some private people go through the building. I have no idea what interest they might have. Because this thing broke so quickly. I didn't know that all these problems were popping up until, I think it was March. I was at Ford this one.
So what are the questions that we have to answer immediately? And can they be answered without going through this route right away if we're so concerned about not following through? And what if we acquire that property and sell it right away just to make this thing go a little bit faster? We get the public involved right away? Will they move as fast? And we make this happen and turn it over to the public, and we aren't landlords and competing against the public? You see what I'm saying?
I think this eliminates any doubt that Mr. Kim's going to negotiate with us.
So, why are we concerned about, I mean, I think we have to take this first step to get our questions answered, and only to give me enough information to make a knowledgeable vote later.
Well, I was just going to say, the reason, I was just going to say that I agree with you guys. I would probably feel in the first half, that was my first thought, like, you know, we cannot be landlords. It's not, you know, this is not where I want to be, this council building. But the more I look at it, and, you know, just the financial aspect of it, I'm not concerned. We have to hold on to the program. So I don't have that, I initially had that concern that if we get this done, then that is sold. I don't have that anymore. I'm really, okay, we can get this done, we can work, you know, maybe find another 24 that, you know, is compatible with the court, and then maybe eventually a private level will step up and act there too. But I don't have that. I don't have that concern.
Sooner or later.
I probably should have mentioned, too, that the state court judges sometimes are short on courtrooms. So I tell them, anytime that you want to use the federal courtroom, you're welcome to do it free of course. So, and they have used it a few times. And they're going to let me try and hold my fee hearings and sentencing at the county courthouse, except just for Mondays, perhaps.
Clint?
How is the rest of the states set up as far as, are they owned? But it's the same situation, they're being leased. Are the government owned, owned up?
Yes.
And the federal government?
The GSA owns all the other federal buildings.
So similar to what we went through here, where the government used to own that building and was going to decide to sell it.
Correct. So why, I don't know either. I thought he paid 800 for that building. Scott Walton, article, he worked and researched it, thought he paid 900.
He paid 90 or 900.
Up and down. But, you know, he's lost all his tenants now.
And supposedly, he's put $200,000 into it, but like he's-
No, that was loan. Scott has article on it. Scott Walton's put $200,000.
Okay.
More than 200,000.
He's basically put nothing into it.
He did the new party for 30,000.
Basically, he's put nothing into it.
That's true. Yeah.
I don't want to rush anybody at all, but are we getting close to where we're ready to vote on this resolution, or, you know, see, I want to hear anybody that's got anything to say. Clint, do you have more?
Oh, my phone just cut out. You know, it does it periodically. You know, I do have some reservations about us owning this property. I, like I say, I'm grateful that Judge Kornman has served us so well, but if, hearing from what I'm hearing, you know, when he's done, there is no interest in having another federal judge in Aberdeen that we can sort of assume that would be there. So there's so many unknowns in this. And granted, this is just the first step, but, you know, the question we have to ask ourselves is, are we going to go through with this? And if we're not, it's really tough just to take on a public expenditure just to see what numbers are, and maybe back out in the end. So, like I say, it really troubles me that, you know, owning another building and being a landlord, because, like I say, I mean, the government sold this building two, three years ago, if I remember correctly, and now the city is going to contemplate eminent domain to buy something that even the government didn't want. And, like I say, the timeframe on this is just so punchy that there could be problems.
Yeah. I guess I'm, thinking about it kind of as a devil's advocate, your argument, Clint, is that, remember a time around seven years ago, eight years ago, when we put money on the table to join a consortium that was looking to buy Northwest Energy? Ultimately, it didn't happen, and the money we put into it just kind of went away. So there is the possibility that we would have to put some money on the table for fees of the other party to make this work, but if we don't take the risk, we're not going to get the result. The result is keeping the federal court. I think that's probably what we all want to see here, so. Whether the Judge Kornman is there-
I caught most of that, Jeff. I caught most of it.
Okay. Well, you probably got all the best parts.
Mr. Kramer, did you have a?
Yeah, Mr. Kramer, I'd like to address the longevity of Judge Kornman, and it's the longevity of the court isn't tied to the longevity of Judge Kornman.
I forgot to have you introduce yourself for our TV audience and our record.
Sure. Jim Kramer, I'm an attorney here in Aberdeen with Vance, Costner, Kramer, and some of my partners are here with me today. Just a little bit of history. Before Judge Kornman, his courtroom, of course, was here, and we were served by judges from Sioux Falls primarily. In fact, Rory King and I were both law courts for the judge in Sioux Falls, and we came to Aberdeen to serve the legal needs here. That will happen when Judge Kornman either retires or goes to the great beyond. But without the courtroom, that won't happen. So if we don't preserve the physical courtroom here, we will not have court here in Aberdeen. So don't tie his longevity to this decision here. We need this courtroom when he's here and when he's gone.
Clint?
Is there, within your group, is there any interest of partnering with, helping us with this?
I think there will be an interest in the private developers in this community to ultimately own this building, based on the numbers that you have before you, which doesn't include a couple of floors that aren't even rented yet. So if you can get some additional rent out of that building, I don't think you'll have any difficulty getting developers to buy that. They're asking if lawyers are going to partner with you to buy the federal courtroom. I don't know that that's such a good idea. There may be a bit of a conflict there. So I wouldn't go that direction. I certainly think there's private developers that would step in, but you're the only entity that can come in at this late date and make this happen, to stopgap the closing of this, because if it closes, we're not going to get federal judges back here, which means no federal reporting ever. And just as a reminder, you know, that there are state courts, and we have the federal court. State courts all have courthouses in their local court, in their local counties, county courthouses, every one of them, and judges- courthouses, every one of them, and judges serve those every week. If we lose one of four here, we're done, and you can't go to state court with these federal cases, they have to be in federal court. And as a reminder, this city was in federal court a couple of years ago with firefighters, and we were special counsel for the city on that. If you didn't have a federal courthouse here, that case would then been in Sioux Falls. I don't think you want our local cases to go to Sioux Falls, and that's what would happen.
Just have one question, perhaps through Mr. Kramer or the judge. If it isn't statute that there would be a federal court here in Aberdeen, and Mr. Kim is basically saying, "Get out", is he somehow in contempt, or is he somehow breaking the law by doing this?
I don't think so.
No? Okay.
Contempt, yes, but not legal contempt.
Well, there may be contempt, but is it really contempt?
I would urge you to pass this, an act with dispatch, then to proceed with the...
Any more, we're ready to vote? If there is no more discussion, we have a motion at a second to pass the resolution of necessity for acquisition of real property, Resolution 1305-03R, in front of you, relating to the federal courthouse building at 102 Fourth Avenue Southeast in Aberdeen. All those in favor of approving that resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no?
Does this need to be a voice vote, a roll call, if I read the resolution correctly?
Okay, typically, a resolution does not need a voice vote, but Adam has indicated that since we need two-thirds, he would like to in this case. Carl?
House Member Remley?
Aye.
Mitchell?
Aye.
Campbell?
Aye.
Lake Hansen?
Aye.
Ignis?
Aye.
Thompson?
Aye.
Rux?
Aye.
Mary Lisa?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kornman.
Is there any other business, Mr. Lander, Mr. Oldman, to come for us at this time? For now, we need a motion to adjourn, so...
Second.
Motion, Mitchell, seconded by Swanson. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.